2024, thank you. We'd like to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance from our Hawthorne first graders. Teacher is Megan Mizrahi. First grade students Jolene Janfaza, Dylan LeVion, Olivia Ishayek, and Kyle Rahimi. Can all stand for the pledge?
We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, us, ready? Alright, place your right hand over your heart.
Place your right hand over your heart.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our mission and vision statement. Can we please have Olivia and Kyle, if they could read our mission and vision statement?
Mission Educational Excellence. Vision. Our students will realize their full potential to try with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you very much, okay. Before we get started, there are a lot of issues that school districts are facing these days and we'll speak about that a little bit later in the meeting. But I also do want to continue to take a moment for hostages who are in the Mideast and are suffering severely. There's also a major conflict in Sudan, Sudan, sorry. I know that some of the atrocities that were carried out on October 7th are also reportedly going on in Sudan. I think about them, I continue to think about Ukraine and all other people who are suffering in this world. Short of that, may I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I will second that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, with that, Dr. Bregge, any items from closed session?
President Stern, there was no action in closed session.
We have a teacher-student spotlight with the Hawthorne School first grade, their teacher and students. Thank you.
Do you want to ask me to come up or no?
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm going to sneak in, that's usually what we do, right? Okay, I'm Sarah Kaver, I'm the principal at Hawthorne. Thank you Board of Education for having us, Dr. Bregge, thank you so much. It is my pleasure to welcome Ms. Mizrahi to come and share what's been happening in her classroom. As you know, the Board of Education and Educational Services have approved working with partners in practice. They are a group of teachers and educators that have really been working on cognitively guided instruction. It's math about conceptual understanding, really working from not just accuracy in our facts, but really understanding and building our own knowledge around math. With the help of Mr. Seaman and Ms. Mayberry, there's been a math leadership team that's been pulled over four different days over the course of the school year. Ms. Mizrahi is not part of that team. She took it upon herself to reach out to members of that team and to partners in practice and learn about these incredible math learning techniques where students have the ability to really form their own understanding. So as a second-year teacher, I really am so proud of her and everything that she's done with her students and I'm really thankful that she wanted to come here and share the learning of her students and also representative of all of the elementary teachers of what we've been working on throughout the year.
Thank you, let me share my screen. Okay. So, my name is Megan Mizrahi, I'm a second-year teacher. This is my second year at Hawthorne and my second-year teaching in general. I teach first grade and I was also a student teacher at Hawthorne in an amazing kindergarten class. So as Mrs. Kaver said, my presentation will be on CGI math, which I'll explain in a minute, and counting collections. I got started with counting collections back in October with our amazing instructional coach, Ellen Polterak. So she's been showing me the ropes and the district has also been generous enough to give us two amazing CGI math coaches who have been guiding us and giving us incredible professional development days. So my presentation will include some video examples, images, data, and then at the end, I've brought four amazing first-grade students with us to come speak. I'll ask them to stay seated for now. Okay, so what is CGI math? When we think CGI, I think visual effects in movies. But this CGI is cognitively guided instruction, so this is my brief definition. The goal is to create student-centered opportunities that allow student thinking and understanding to guide their learning. Teachers engage students in this learning by asking questions and aiding in expanding their number sense and other key foundational skills. So when we do CGI math in the classroom, I'm more of a moderator. I'm not providing a lot of direct instruction, but I am there to guide students through challenges, ask them probing questions, and get them to reach their full potential as math learners. Sorry. In my next slide, you may be wondering what counting collections are. Students work in partnerships with a shared collection of objects with the goal of sorting and counting those objects. They use various tools and a strategy of their choice in order to do so. After sorting and counting, students document their strategy and the quantity of the collection by drawing a visual representation of their findings. The beauty of counting collections is that they are inherently differentiated by the students for the students. So they are working at their level in partnerships, challenging themselves and growing. It's extremely open-ended and it has many different entry points. So while they are working on the same thing, they're at different levels of understanding and they're growing their own brains. As I mentioned in my definition, they also have access to various tools, which I will show next. On the left-hand side, I've included some examples of what we count in our classroom. We have beans, seashells, different miniature erasers. And on the right-hand side, I've included tools that are accessible to the students. At the beginning of our activity, they are able to go up and pick any tools of their liking. We have different things like cups and bowls, which help them make groups of objects to later skip count. And then we also have 10 frames, 100 charts, and also place value charts. So what is the academic importance of counting collections? I have a pretty hefty list, but I'll only go over the first few just to give you a general idea. The first being one-to-one correspondence. This is a skill that we would love our first graders to come in with and we work on all the time. One-to-one correspondence is where the students are grabbing an object and counting it in ascending order. After that, we have sorting. Students at the beginning of the year were sorting by color, by shape, and by size. And now they've moved on to sorting by groups of numbers. We have skip counting, which goes hand-in-hand with sorting. I've seen students skip count by twos, fives, tens, even twenties and nines. And then we also have grouping and regrouping, which is very helpful when they're rearranging their objects to figure out the quantity of their collection. Counting collections are also very socially important. Again, another hefty list, but the most important being turn-taking as they learn to work in partnerships and in groups. Management skills, so time management, making sure they're completing in a timely manner. Object management, making sure that their materials are accounted for, and also partner management. We also have verbal communication skills. You really can't get the collection done if you're not talking to your partner. And we also have interdependence, which to me is the most important. We talk about our students and wanting them to become independent learners. But with counting collections, they're really working together and this is a skill that they'll need in their academic career and in their life beyond schooling. So this is an example of what we had at the beginning of the year. On the left-hand side, we have a picture of my students who grouped by color. When they group by color, we get a lot of very diverse groups with several different numbers that makes it very challenging at the end to add all together. So in this picture, on the right-hand side, I have an example of a recording sheet of a student who sorted by color. We can see the numbers like 10, 24, 5, 12, 13. Again, very diverse groups and this is not always an efficient or accurate way of counting their objects. At this point in the year, we've started to move away by grouping by color or size or shape and we are now grouping by number groups. So next to my image of the dominos, we have a student who grouped by twenties and was able to add that amount at the end to find their grand total. And to the side of that, we have a student who grouped in nines. The student is working on multiplication in our math fact program. So the two really go hand-in-hand to help him challenge himself and extend the counting collection activity. So here is a quick video of counting collections in action. I will play it for you and then we'll talk about the skills that we see in the video.
Which one of you can count by twos for me? Ready? Okay, good. Who can count, show me coral counting. Ready, begin. One, two, three, counting together.
I know. Who can do it the fastest?
Do you have a favorite number?
14.
14, why is it seven for you? And fourteen?
Easier to write.
Your favorite number is? Is seven also. This is the seventh class, okay? That's right.
Okay, now that we're back on track. So we can see that in the video, the students have one-to-one correspondence. They're picking up one object and counting it in ascending order while they put it into the cup, which represents the group. They are making a group of twenties, so while they're making that group, they're corally counting or counting aloud. They're collaborating and they are taking turns as they put each item into the cup. In our next slide, we will see a group of students that are counting by twenties. You'll hear my probing question at the beginning and then you will watch them work together and count. How many you have in all and how you count it? So as we can see, my student who is counting by twenties went through the sequence 20, 40, 60, and then she had a challenging time remembering what number came next in the sequence. Because her and her partner are interdependent, he was able to help her find the next number in the sequence so that she could continue counting until she reached her total. So this exemplifies their verbal communication skills, their addition skills at the end of the collection, their skip counting, and their problem solving. So when we have students that reach the end of the collection, sometimes they are in need of an extension, which means that they need that little extra push to be challenged a little more. On the left-hand side of my slide, I have a teacher-generated extension, which I've created. In this example, the total was 161. The students broke up the number by place value and then added 10, subtracted 10, and added 100. On the right-hand side of the slide, we have student-generated extensions. I had nothing to do with these extensions, although they're amazing, I wish I did. But these are from the students themselves. On the left, our student calculated the totals of every single collection. She gathered the totals from every student in the class and was working on adding them all together. And to the side of that, we have a student whose collection were coins. He had dimes and pennies, so not only did he calculate the quantity of his collection, he also calculated the monetary value of his collection by placing the dimes into the tens part of the place value chart and placing the pennies into the ones part of the place value chart based on their monetary value. So on the opposite end of extension, we also have students that are in need of a little bit of support. In my class, we do a few things, the first being a strategy chart. At the beginning of our collection, I'll write each student's name on the chart and I'll ask them to share what strategy they like to use. After they've done that, we are able to see as a class what strategy each student is using, what is effective, and they're able to take pride and ownership in what they're doing while also exploring different options from their peers. We also do student-led sharing and discussions before and after our collections. Students bring up a picture of their collection and discuss how they found the quantity. And then last but not least, I do debriefs with the whole class and with individual students before and after counting, which is what this video is. So in the video, I will be asking guiding questions to get our student to explain her thinking. You tell me how you counted last time and how you counted this time.
Last time, I counted by shape. This time, I counted by tens.
Okay, and what was different about the way you counted?
This one, this was more efficient.
This was more efficient, why was it more efficient?
Because this, counting by shape, it took way longer and it was harder to count.
Oh, why was it harder and why did it take longer to do it by shape?
It took longer because it was all the different numbers. This one even had 122.
And that's a big group, right?
Yeah.
So what did you do today? What kind of groups did you do?
Tens.
By tens, and can you show me how you counted that? Perfect. So in the video, our student is comparing her collection from the previous week to her collection from this week. Before this video took place, I did lead a student discussion about effective strategies so we can see that she reconsidered how she counted last week and found that grouping by tens was a more effective strategy, which is what she tried this week. And she explains in the video that it is more efficient to count by tens and she can find the quantity in a quicker and more effective way. So my last piece is my class data. We have started using the program iReady this year. It's a reading and math program. I will be talking about our math diagnostic results today, but I want to explain. After we take the diagnostic, iReady generates a five-level placement data graph. So we will be reading our data from right to left and these are the five levels. The hashed red box is three or more grade levels below. The solid red is two grade levels below, yellow is one grade level below, green is early on in grade level, and the hashed green is mid or above grade level. So when we look at our diagnostic results, we will look at our beginning-of-the-year results, which is from August without any prior instruction. And then we will look at our middle-of-year results from December after instruction, counting collections, and lots of math. As you can see, our beginning-of-the-year data shows that I have five students who are two grade levels below, about a quarter of my class. I have 64% of my class who came in one grade level below or a kindergarten level, which is where we wanted them to enter without any instruction from me. And then on the left-hand side, I'm going to combine our green sections for consistency's sake. We have three students in the green, or 14%. We have three students in the green or fourteen percent. After we took our diagnostic result, we started doing counting collections weekly. And when we took our middle-of-year assessment, we can see that the quarter of my class who was two grade levels below moved up into either the yellow and some into the green or mid or above grade level. So now, we have thirty-two percent of students who are mid or above grade level, which means that that number has more than doubled in the time in between our diagnostics. And I expect that by the end of the year, almost all of my students will be mid or above grade level. The data is very accurate and reliable, so I am very excited to see how much our students grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, before we close out, I'd love for my rock star first graders to come on up. I'm going to ask them a couple of questions and they're going to give us their honest feedback. Can I move this down here for them? What's your name?
Kyle Hemi.
And Kyle, why do you like counting collections?
Because I count by twenties and it's really fun to do.
Okay, very nice. Thank you, Kyle. What's your name?
Olivia Ashiak.
And why do you think counting collections are helpful?
Because they help us count in different ways. Sometimes it can be challenging or hard, but it is still fun and it helps us count more faster than we usually do.
Thank you, Olivia. What's your name?
Jolene Janfaza.
What do you like about counting collections?
That you get to learn different ways and you learn different strategies and like when you do that, you get like a big brain, like it's like a bubblegum brain.
Thank you, Jolene. And what's your name, sir?
Dylan Levine.
And Dylan, what are some strategies you use when you do your counting collections?
Counting by nines and eights and, um, sorting by color and size and, and, and if it's a big number, I, 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 I use numbers that, that divide by fives and tens and, and, and I like when it's challenging.
Perfect, thank you, Dylan. Thank you so much for your time and listening to us speak about counting collections. Our students love them, I really appreciate it.
I'd like to go around and just see if any of our board members have comments.
Thank you, Ms. Mizrahi, for the presentation. This is all very, very impressive. I loved hearing from our students. I'm so glad that the counting collections is working out and you guys are having fun and learning at the same time. And yeah, I hope everything continues to progress and improve. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, kids, for coming in today. That was very, very educational for me. And it gives me hope about where our students are headed in our district, so thanks.
I agree, and it's really nice to hear you talk about iReady and for us to see iReady in action and as well as your teaching strategies and your enthusiasm and passion for teaching. And I really appreciate all of you coming today to really explain to us and to show us the work that you're doing. It just is, the best example is to actually see and hear from you. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Mizrahi. It's, it's nice to finally meet you and your reputation precedes you. And just seeing the kids so engaged and excited is the best part and love having you guys here. Thank you for joining us.
I want to thank you for coming, kids. You really were terrific. I can tell, I can tell by your smiles how much you love this and that makes me happy. So that's very, very good. And I have to tell you, math has changed a lot since I went to school. I wouldn't even be able to do this and amaze me what you guys are doing is amazing and keep up the good work. I look forward to seeing you here again. And thank you to Ms. Mizrahi for a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I am especially impressed with the idea that you guys are thinking about how you're thinking, right? And that's one of the ways that we get better at math and everything we do is that you guys are talking about, you know, well, what strategy did you use and what strategy did you use? And through that way, we can build on, on the flexibility of solving math and, you know, have individual responses. So I can see that it's really working and I'm very happy to see all of you here. Thank you.
I want to add one more thing. I love the sociability of it, the working together with the kids and changing partners and getting around the classroom to meet with and work with the other students, which I'm sure they do. So that's a wonderful outcome also.
And Ms. Mizrahi, sorry. So impressive you appear today, that, I mean, second-year teacher, that's just, that has blown me away. What I really love about what you did was, we've talked a lot about the strategic plan over the last few years. We've talked about that data piece where it's gone from the administration and it's gone from the district office to our building principals. And what you really demonstrated here for us is that it's, it's, it's going to the place where it matters most, you know, the magic in the classroom and how teachers are able to do the diagnostics. So I want to thank you for doing that because we haven't been able to show that for the board yet, but it fits nicely into our strategic plan and you did a very eloquent job of explaining that. Thank you.
We're now going to move on to the public comment. Jane Asher.
Thank you to our parents, too.
Thank you, Ms. Asher. You have three minutes.
Okay, great. I see the timer here. I guess someone will start it for me. Uh, yes, or do I push, do I push them? You'll start it. Okay, okay. My name is Dr. Jane Tavia Asher. I'm a board-certified child neurologist, also trained in neurodevelopmental disabilities, trained at Texas Children's Hospital, biggest children's hospital in the country, now division chief of child neurology at Cedar Sinai for the past fifteen years. So I've seen tens of thousands of families over the last twenty-five years that I've been doing this. I'm here today because if you may have heard my talk at Hawthorne about the use of technology and the dangers involved with it, in light of the events of the recent, of the past week, of course, it's, it's really, we're coming to realize that this is, there's more problems coming down the pipeline than we even ever could have imagined. And so I think it really is, it behooves us to really readdress the use of technology in our school district and to make sure that we are doing what the research dictates that we should be doing. There was a concept of a digital divide that is really a concept from the eighties or the nineties where it was felt that low socioeconomic students did not have access to the internet, to technology, computers, phones, and things like that, and they were at a disadvantage for that. That no longer exists. That's forty-five-year-old data. So everyone, any socioeconomic status, the government helps to support internet. Well, I'm, I'm realizing I'm talking, running out of time faster than I thought. Anyway, the idea is the digital divide no longer exists. We really need to look at the long and short-term consequences of giving our children access to so much technology. It's cutting into their social time. They still have video games on the devices that we give them. They still can use the, use those during free time in the classroom and screens. They're given that time instead of socialization. It's still leading to addiction. If they're on the screen all day, what do you think they want to do all night? Their frontal lobe is completely underdeveloped at this age, especially in middle school. We can't tell them, don't do this. Their frontal lobe is not developed to keep themselves from doing that. Car insurance companies know that, you can't rent a car. So we're, we're giving them the technology, telling them not to use it. They can't, they don't have the frontal lobe to stop themselves. Safe social media use, those kinds of instructions, that is really not research-based at this age. It's, you're not able to tell children to have safe social media use. The research shows that there should be no social media use. The research shows under sixteen years of age, there should be none. The law is saying thirteen years of age, but the law is behind the research, is lagging behind the research. We have lost learning opportunities in the classroom, thinking that we are giving them the technology to advance their learning, and we're not. They should be working on reading, reading comprehension, writing, verbal communication, and doing things like flip grid that they do in elementary school. That's kind of, these are like gate, almost gateway drugs is how you can think of it. It's like a gateway into making a TikTok is a flip grid that we're teaching them in the classroom. A gateway, you know, the video games, we don't want them to be playing video games, but the math programs that we're giving them in the classroom are video games. So, just give me ten seconds to wrap up. Seeing, being as shocked this week as I'm sure we all were, real, being blindsided by what happened, I think we should realize that there are going to be more things we're going to be blindsided by because technology is going to develop at a faster rate than we can imagine and we have to protect our children from it. Bringing it into the classroom is not research shown to give them an advantage later in learning it. We're not going to keep them from learning it later by not exposing them to, at this age. That's what the research shows.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into, can I get a motion for the approval of the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we move to reports. Student board member report.
Okay. No, no presentation today, just me. Apologies. But it's been a pretty, relatively uneventful past couple of weeks here, student life-wise. Yeah. Starting out with athletics because that's one of the main things going on. All our spring sports are now officially in season and have had games so far. Our boys varsity and JV tennis teams had a scrimmage against Samo last week where we got some amazing practice and playtime in. And cross-country's had many meets now, including one against Malibu at the Malibu Invitational last weekend where we brought home medals in the thirty-two hundred and the long jump. So, great start for our track team. Next, to focus on performing arts, our theater department put on last week its production of A Midsummer Night's Dream. This was a nineteen-twenty's New Orleans immersive Midsummer Night's Dream, which was an amazing experience. I hope you all got to see that at some point. Very cool and unexpected and fresh for the theater department. And in addition, they won a bunch of awards recently at the Linnea County Theater Competition. So that's looking amazing and they're now moving on to promoting their spring musical coming up soon, The Pirates of Penance. So all very exciting. Lastly, focusing on some upcoming events at the high school, we have our very highly anticipated senior versus staff member basketball tournament or game tomorrow. And additionally, we have a bunch of student activities like PSAT Day and for seniors, College Preparedness Day coming up next week, as well as Career Day. This is one of my personal favorite events of the year. I'm sure you guys get an opportunity to come around and check it out, but also very exciting coming up. And that about wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving into the superintendent report.
Thank you, President Stern. In lieu of my normal superintendent report where I have the opportunity to share the incredible achievements of our school district, tonight I must address a nationwide issue that's happening, that we have become the face of a story. It's out of an absolutely horrific event. And I have to mention tonight, just, you know, being not sure how our families that are victims of the issue that's happening in our school district is, is having this opportunity to process this information. I want to express my profound outrage for what has happened with the AI-generated inappropriate photos that have been created, disseminated, and possessed by students in our school district. It's clearly, as a teacher and former educator, that this has just shaken the, the foundation of trust and safety that we work with every day to create for all of our students. Within the bounds of the state of California, I can assure you that we are conducting a very thorough investigation, not limited to continuing our interviews and in following up with some of our students and working with the Beverly Hills Police Department. Disciplinary actions will be including and up to recommendation for expulsion. I was able to spend the last couple of days at BVMS during pickup, drop-off, and throughout the day. I am very pleased to report, however, that our students are doing quite well. We have very resilient students and they seem happy and a little confused about what's happening. I want to thank and take this moment to, just, my gratefulness to the BVMS staff and the administration there because they are conducting very long and difficult investigations. This is a very serious issue, as you've heard tonight from public comment and also from the communication that our school district has put out. I do believe that our next step is to partner with bigger organizations, our lawmakers who are responsible for the safety of our students. And I feel as if that is the next step for not only our school district, but what's happening in school districts all across the country, in fact, all across the world as we're learning. I want to just make it very clear that this behavior will not be tolerated and that as a school district, we do have a responsibility to ensure that we educate our students and we really reach out to our parent partners as well because we need some help when students are at home. And I ask that parents continuously look at their phones, what students are, what apps are on their phone, what they're sending, the social media sites that they're using. Because as was mentioned in public comment, this is opening the door for a lot of new technology that is appearing without any regulation at all. And if you think about, you know, smoking and you, you think about, you know, just driving cars and things are regulated by age and by experience, this is completely unregulated. And I just want to make it clear that it is important. Part of our responsibility is for students, you know, that they understand this technology, that they're able to use this technology for the future, but how to use that technology in the most appropriate ways. And so I want to assure our community how important this is to all of us, the amount of time that we're spending on it. And since we are the face of this story, that we have a very great responsibility for our school community and the greater community to ensure that we handle this in a very professional way, in a very thorough way, and that we will be working with our lawmakers and any other organization that will partner with us. We're hoping to partner with other school districts. School districts often work in isolation and this is one of those items or one of the areas that we need to connect our school districts together. We often aren't the, the organizations that do the advocacy with our lawmakers, but this is clearly something that we need to do going forward and being unified with other school districts across the country to put a stop to this before this continues to get out of hand. So, that's in lieu of my report. I do want you to know we've spent a lot of time on this issue and, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I want you to know how thorough what we're doing and, and again, how we are, our most important priority right now is working with the victims so that they get the support that they need and that their families get the support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. And yes, I know it's been quite an eventful couple of days and you've been in contact with us and it's been a rapidly evolving situation. Board members, do you want to comment or any questions for Dr. Breggy?
No, I appreciate your statement, Dr. Breggy, and just wanted to echo the sympathies to the victims of this event. I think as a board representative and a student, this is something that I have a weird perspective, both witnessing the policymaking of and sort of development of on the student end, awareness-wise at the same time. And yeah, I think this is just a really poignant reminder, at the very least, to us as a board to continue keeping our eye on the development of AI and our policymaking as far as it's, as far as it concerns the classroom. Obviously, this is a much bigger issue than we can control as a board and a school district, but I hope that we can continue to make, like, reiterate the clear message regarding its usage and both academically and personally and because this, I think, is largely socio-emotional we involve and also the guidelines of behavior along with it. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot.
I would just say that I appreciate your comments, Dr. Breggy. It's, I've brought this up before and it's, once again, we find ourselves with circumstances that are out of our control. that are out of our control, yet we have to put all of our resources into. And our school district is designed to educate children. But here we are playing police and parent and all the other things that we are constantly called to bomb playing because I think people in the community don't understand their roles as parents and students as partnerships in a child's education. And I think the points that you made about government regulation, it's sad that it has to come to that discussion, but I guess, you know, like you said, driving cars and drinking and smoking and all of these things that had to be regulated by the government because people couldn't choose to do them responsibly. And I think we find ourselves in that position. I hope the government, both state and federal, hear this clearly, hear what's going on in this country. We are, I guess we've become the poster child for this issue, but we are certainly not carrying this banner on our own. And I hope that we understand that as America falls further and further behind in education in the world, we take a look at that we're doing it to ourselves, and we need to understand that. And we need to understand that we are all the solution. It's not going to come from an outside source. So, people have to parent, students have to be responsible, legislatures have to do their jobs and make sure that school districts can go back to the job of educating students. Thanks.
Ms. Wells?
Well, I agree with what's been said. I think, you know, the statement is that, you know, our time being responsible for our students and families, it extends beyond the time that they step onto our campus and they go home. Because of technology, it really has expanded beyond that, and it has an impact on their ability when they come back to our school campus to be able to be able to learn. It affects their learning. I think that I'm very proud of you and our district and admin for responding so quickly and really not taking the issue lightly at all and really jumping in and beginning an investigation and taking the steps that are necessary. I appreciate that. I'm very happy that our board did put a no-cellphone policy into our middle school as well as throughout our schools, quite frankly. And people questioned that when we started that at the beginning of the year, and I'm really proud that we had that in place. But it shows that it's not even enough because it extends beyond our school day and the hours of our instruction. So, there has to be more policy in place to the extent that we can. And it also highlights as well what we've been saying and have been saying throughout this year, how important our partnership is with our families and parents and as well as education. And I'd like to thank Dr. Tevitt for coming up and speaking today. She did speak at our parent university and really spoke about these issues. It was last year, I believe it was. And so, it was food for thought, and it was also really what started a conversation about a no-cellphone policy in our schools. So, I'm happy that we're taking the steps, but this is new territory. We do have policies in place, and we've put in a lot of procedures around behaviors, especially around our middle school. And we spent a lot of time this summer doing that, and I'm happy we did because I think we're in a better place at this point for you to respond in the way that you did in a very methodical way and to really address the needs of our entire school community, all of the students that have been involved and not involved because it impacts all of us. So, thank you. And thank you to this board. I know that we'll continue to look at this and take the steps that we can take and, like you said, extend it beyond our school district.
Ms. Manishari?
Thank you. I certainly agree with everything that's been said before me. I really do want to take us back to where we were this past summer when we worked together as a board and with Dr. Breggy on the Behavior and Accountability Committee that we had and Mr. Seaman presented on AI and his anticipation of where AI was taking us in terms of plagiarism and cheating and academics. And we, as a board, also came together and put forth the cellphone policy. Really, I think what we were trying to do was send a very clear and concise message about our expectation and our standards for behavior and excellence at Beverly Hills Unified School District. And I don't see us backing away from that anytime soon. If anything, what's been happening invigorates me and reminds me that we have to be leaders and to be one step ahead of everyone else if we can be. So, I thank you, Dr. Breggy, for your diligence and your team's diligence. And I do believe that the cellphone policy, the AI policy, the behavior and accountability work that we did, that a lot of people said, "Where is this going to end us up with?" That's been serving us in the last couple of days. The missing link at this point, from my perspective, is the partnership with the parents and the families. And, you know, we are going from a middle school that had zero afternoon sports programs to 24 afternoon sports programs. And the reason that I mention that and the reason that I harp on that is because I want the kids to be outside, active, in a team, physical environment. And so, what I say to my fellow parents, and I am one of you, is please get in control of the kids and the tech and the access and the kids hanging around in the afternoons. We have dozens and dozens of programs that are meant to keep your kids off the phones in the afternoons. And I have said this to Dr. Breggy, and he has not said no to me one time. But my, what I want for our school district, and I know my board agrees with me, is that this is a destination for families and this is a destination for your children. We want your kids to be able to be here from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM as much as possible. So, take advantage of those opportunities. But when the kids come home to you, they are your children and you are the parents. And so, we are setting the expectation of excellence on the school sites, but we need the families to set that excellence expectation at home. So, I hope that this happened to our community early on so that it will be a learning experience and it's preventing us from something even worse happening. So, please talk to your kids. Please talk to the other kids in carpool. Please talk to the other parents, and hopefully, this is a case of first and last impression for us.
Thank you. Ms. Marcus?
I want to thank you, Dr. Breggy, for that thorough report of the situation. I have a few thoughts of my own, and already my colleagues have been able to express many of them. But I guess I feel that I just get a chance to say them myself because it's the way I feel. First of all, we can stop the phones at school. We could have them, put them away. But these kids go home at school, after school, and that's where the problem starts. We, the parents, have to take stronger control of what our students are doing with their phones. And that's where I think we are failing completely. And also, the fact that we use them in our classes and so on, and we're trying to put that down according to the report that Dr. Asher gave us last time, was amazing to show us the effect that it had on our students, and I really appreciate her for that. I also would like to talk to the community about the time it has taken our administrators to go through and deal with this in the investigation. It has taken hours and hours of time, which could have been spent more appropriately in the academics of our students. And I think that that is something that I find reprehensible, that so much of their time was devoted to a subject that we should have been able to stop. But we can't stop it. We have to learn how to stop it. And lastly, I hope that this message is out there to the whole community, that we are not going to tolerate this. We will make sure that we get our kids to understand the impropriety of doing things like this and make sure that they know that they can't hide. We need to stop it, and we need them to know that they will not, they will have repercussions. So, again, I would like to go back to the one strong feeling. These parents, parenting begins at home, and that's where it also should start. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say that I am grateful. I mean, I'm saddened for the victims, but I am grateful that there's been what appears to be substantial support in the middle school with the wellness. We're one of the districts that has the benefit of having a dedicated middle school wellness center, and I know that they've been making use of that, and I'm happy for that. My colleagues have said some amazing things that make a lot of sense to me. I started to say about six months ago that AI, and it was sort of a new term, maybe about six months to a year ago, that we start to talk about AI. And I began to realize that it is not going anywhere, and it's gotten its tentacles wrapped around education and all educational institutions. And there's a lot of good and a lot of tools that it brings to us, but there is a balance, obviously. And if used inappropriately, as is the case in recent days, it can be very, very bad. And we just have to find a way to, you know, put our phones where they should be and to be used appropriately and efficiently without harm. And I'm hopeful that as life progresses with AI in schools, that we will find the balance and that students and their families will understand the place for everything that they do on their phone. Thank you.
And just to end on a positive note, you know, the middle school staff has spent the last couple of days going into every single classroom, talking with students. And that's a huge benefit to start having those conversations with all students. And also, our parents, the collaboration with our parents, just during pickup and drop-off, we actually, parents were getting out of their cars and giving us a hug or a high-five because they know that we're in this together. And so, I'm hoping that being the face of this story now is going to be part of the journey going forward, that we are in this together and that we can get through this together. And early signs through this investigation is that everybody is working together, and that's been demonstrated over the last couple of days. So, I want to thank our school community for reaching out and working with us as partners.
Thank you. Okay, shifting starkly to item 12A.
I'll make a resolution, sorry, a motion to approve Resolution 2023-2408 Regarding Release From Temporary Certificated Position.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to 2324 LCAP Midyear Expenditure Update. Rafael?
I guess the LCAP isn't big news. Sorry, got confused here with the mics. Okay. My apologies. One second, while I pull up the presentation, and I will be right with you all. Okay. Here you go, sir. Thank you. All right. Well, I just want to start off by saying thank you to the board, and good afternoon to our community members. I'm sorry, good evening to our board president, Dr. Stern. Our board members and our community just want to thank you all for being here today and being able to present to you the mid-year LCAP update. So, this is something new that the state has asked us to do, and I'm trying to pull... I'm sorry, it's just these settings sometimes are a little weird. Okay, here we go. All right. I am so sorry for this. I normally have everything... Okay, here we go. So, again, this is the mid-year LCAP update. LCAP stands for the Local Control Accountability Plan. And so, Senate Bill 114 added a requirement for local educational agencies to present a report on the annual update to the Local Control and Accountability Plan. So, essentially, what this is, is the state wants us to make sure that we're updating our parents with what we're doing with our funds in a mid-year kind of sequence, instead of reporting it all the way till the end of the year or with the United Actials or with some other type of report. It's kind of like a mid-year check-in of how we're doing. Now, many districts across the state of California receive what's called supplemental concentration funds. We're a little bit different in Beverly Hills because we are what's known as a basic aid or also known as a community-funded district. So, what does that mean? Essentially, it means that we're funded more on property taxes. That's the biggest source of our funding in comparison to the majority of other districts, which are funded mainly on state aid and some other types of funds. So, for us, the portion of supplemental and concentration funds is very minimal. In fact, what we receive for LCFF funds from state aid is also known as the minimum state aid, which is what we receive. So, it's about a little under $2 million that we get for LCFF funding. So, this LCAP report, we are able to put in how we're expending those funds and what's inside of the LCAP and what's not inside of the LCAP. So, as you can see here, our total budgeted expenditures in the LCAP are about $4.2 million. When compared to the total pot of funds of $97.9 million, you can see that only 4.2 is there, and mainly that's, again, because it is a very minimal amount that we receive for supplemental and concentration funding. So, what's not included in the LCAP basically are the base salaries that we have for classroom teachers, people support at administration, district office staff, maintenance and operations, and different types of other types of funding that are not included in the LCAP. So, where are we with our LCAP mid-year expenditure? So, we have some different goals in the LCAP, and most of this was reviewed in our previous presentation by Mr. Seaman and who's soon to be doctor, right? Very soon. And so, the LCAP goal, as you can see, we have the first goal here, which is all students will achieve at least one year's growth in one year's instruction in English and math, as evidenced by pre and post tests and CASP and SAT data. It's also to provide appropriate academic supports for students that need intervention, increase the number of students that are prepared for college career readiness, create a culture of professional learning based on student performance data, high-leverage instructional strategies and practices, and classroom implementation in all grades. And finally, ensure students have a successful return to in-person learning. And as you can see here, here are some of the investments that the district has made in those different areas. Perhaps the bigger investments that you can see are teachers and principals will participate in high-quality, standards-based professional development that leads to proficiency in EOD instruction. Of the funds that we budgeted, which was about $766,000 for that line item, we've spent about $506,000, which makes sense as we are more than halfway through the school year. And you can see the other items there. I'm not going to read each one of them, but you can see that for most of those items, we are spending our dollars as we thought we were going to spend. So, those are very well accounted for. And again, the purpose of this update is really not to see how much you've exactly expended. It's just to see that we're on point and that those expenditures are being targeted the right way. The second LCAP goal that we have is the increase of daily attendance and engagement, reduction of suspension rates, increase in school culture, and increasing parent engagement. Of those, you could see that the biggest source of funding was in PBAS intervention, which was funded at about $160,000. Of the $160,000, $142,000 has been spent already up to this point. And you could see the other areas there in our presentation that have also seen expenses from the district. And finally, the third LCAP goal is to provide safe, compliant, and quality school facilities and technologies to support the district's mission statement. As you can see here, there, the goal was the five-year deferred maintenance plan. It was a $1.6 million budget. Of that, $956,000 has been expended. So, we are well on track there to expend all of our funds. So, that pretty much does it. I do want to, before we go into questions, I want to make sure I show this to you because I was told you have to show this or else it doesn't count. And so, here is the actual, like, kind of report in the format that you could see. And it's basically what you've already seen. We just clipped some of these items out. Again, this shows the different goals and the expenses in the different areas. Here's Goal Two. And again, that shows you, we've already covered that. And Goal Three, finally, there at the end. Now, if for most districts, this would be a lot more robust, a lot bigger. But again, I want to reiterate that we get very minimal funding for supplemental and concentration grant dollars. And finally, the last other document that they said, if you don't show it, doesn't count, is the LCFF Budget Overview for Parents. So, this is where it's at, updated as of now. And you could see here, it kind of shows you that graph that we reviewed earlier where it shows our total LCFF dollars. And again, I clarified that most of that money is actually property taxes. And then, just basically, as we scroll further down, you can see that that $4.2 million of the LCAP is only a very small portion of the $98 million that we have in the budget. And finally, just a small statement there of the increase or improved services for high-needs students in the LCAP. So, we just wanted to make sure we showed all of those different scenarios to you. And then, I'll go back here and see if there's any questions.
Thank you so much, as always. Very positive and very informative.
Thank you.
Let's start with Sophia.
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Gussman.
Thank you.
Rafael, just for clarification, funds that aren't used or allocated, I was noticing in the different side-by-side columns that some are definitely on track. Some have actually been used up already, and some seem a little further than I... has more left in the balance than I would think for the rest of the year. So, what is the protocol for?
So, what we would be doing with those funds is, at the end of the year, we reconcile those numbers, and then, basically, if there is any carryover amount, then we reallocate that to the budget. that to the budget in the next year.
So there's not a time on this expenditure?
There's, these are not expiring funds.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarification out there. Thanks.
Thank you.
This may be a little bit too micro, but I'm just curious about Goal 1.9 for college admissions. Is this, are these expenses you're anticipating later in the year? Or why do you, how do you respond to the fact that?
I believe that some, most of these are for when students are submitting to college applications. So some of those funds are coming in now, are being spent now. I don't know if Mr. Seaman has some more clarifying words for that, but basically, it's to allow our students to apply. And again, most of those monies, like I said, this report is through, actuals through December, so you'll see some more coming in. Yes.
Totally. The college admissions, college career readiness, curriculum, like 1.7, 1.8, 1.9, is really targeted towards our low socioeconomic students. So it's, if a student was to submit a college waiver fee, we can go ahead and cover those costs. And so that's what that dollar amounts accredited to. And there are still some rolling admissions. So there are still some students that are out there that may need an application. But I would say that we haven't been in a position in the last seven years where we've actually spent that full account. But the counter is always there from board approval and a recommendation from staff, is that way, if a student needed support in the application process, we would have those funds to help support them. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seaman. But yeah, that's where that's at. And again, those don't expire. So that's the good thing about these funds. They're not expiring funds. Thank you.
Just thank you for presenting it in such a digestible, really easy-to-understand way. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again. It was, as my colleague said, very, very clear and understanding. It's very interesting that, to make sure people don't understand that this is only a little tiny portion, 4 million out of almost a $97 million expenditure, and that these are earmarked funds that are for very specific things that we get for these various special interests and so on, like low income or something like that. These funds come from special interest projects, as I recall.
Correct. And again, that's mainly because of our community-funded status. Most school districts across California, this is a much more robust report, with a lot of different goals and a lot of different metrics and so many different things. But because most of our funds are property tax anyways, that's why you see such a little more.
So that's why this is, to differentiate this between the interim report that we do, where we show how things are going, this is only about showing about how $4 million is being spent. So I just want people to understand that. We're not talking about our big budget. This is a little tiny portion.
And that interim report's coming in our next meeting. So that's.
Oh, really? I look forward to seeing it. Again, thank you for a very clearly thought-out presentation. It made it very interesting and I think easily understandable.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marcus.
Thank you again, and we look forward to your next update.
All right. Thank you.
With that, can I get a motion for 14A?
Sure. I'll make a motion for the acceptance and filing of a notice of completion of the completed Beverly Vista Bulldog Aid Wellness Center modular building provided by American Modular Systems.
Might as well stay for that.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Ms. Wells. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the acceptance and filing of a notice of completion of the completed Beverly Vista Bulldog Aid Wellness Center project with Garza Construction.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And 14C.
I'll make a motion for the approval of proposals for technology consulting with Vantage Technology Consulting Group for the high school El Rodeo and Beverly Vista and Horace Man auditoriums.
Can I get a second?
We need a second to discuss.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
I would like, if someone could explain the construction administration costs that are identified there, like there's 12,000 for the system peer review, and then there's 22,000. How do they know so accurate what they're going to spend for that? And if those are any estimates, I'd like to clarify. And the one that, there's one that's at the Horace Man School and at Beverly Vista, where the construction administration, is that the actual cost of doing the work? Do we know what they're doing? Has it been identified yet?
Yes. So with the, so for example, and I guess you might be looking at like the different costs, right? So for the high school, the total cost was 34,000. The reason why that one is a little, is lower than like, for instance, BVMS and Horace Man Elementary School, is because of the fact that for the high school, all of the design portion and the construction has already been done. So it's already been vetted, it's already been completed. So now it's just the actual construction administration and the actual systems peer review that they're doing to make sure that all the AV is working correctly. There's a lot of work that goes into making sure the AV works, especially in the theaters and everything else that's going to be done at the high school. So it's a pretty reasonable cost. We actually went out for different types of vendors, and these are actually better costs than what we had seen before in the past. The reason why El Rodeo is even less is because that one's almost completely done, actually. And if you were there, you could have seen, you know, the AV was working pretty well. Beverly Vista and Horace Man Elementary, Beverly Vista Middle School and Horace Man Elementary School, the difference there is that we do need some design and construction done. And so that's, that's a little more intense, and that's why you're seeing those amounts there. Doesn't mean that we're going to spend that fully, but that's our estimate as of now. And again, we did get some different quotes for that in the past. What we're trying to do is make sure that the AV works better at the middle school and at Horace Man, because right now it's inadequate. We have to like rent things, and that's why you're seeing those increased costs. Yes. Yes. And that's why we need that, because right now, there is, we don't have a design for those. So that's why like, that cost is much, is a little higher, or else it would just be like, let's say, the 17,000 to administer all the construction.
Didn't we land the last year or even more, go out and try to get this done, and they weren't able to do it? I recall.
We've tried to look at this in the past, but the costs came out real, a lot higher. But Sandy and her team were able to get a much better quote here with Vantage. Vantage is well-known in the industry, and they've done pretty good work. So we're pretty confident that this is going to work out, because, you know, the alternative is to continue renting, and a lot of times, just the rental fees for just the microphones, it's.
At least for that much each time you borrow it.
Yes.
But I just wanted to make sure that I understood what this was about. And for people in the audience and listening, what it's about.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for that.
I forgot to put the mic. I just wanted actually to thank Sandy, because I remember in the spring of last year, you said, no way, this is beyond the pale for us. So thank you for putting it on hold and taking the time to find something more reasonably priced.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to communication from board members.
I think pertaining the events of this past week, everything has been said, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
Does that mean I can't talk?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're done.
And so it is said. I attended the HRC, the Human Relations Commission, meeting this past month, where they were celebrating and recognizing kindness week. Five community members were given certificates for their kindness, and I'll just tell you their names. Dion Jackson, Annette Sala, JR Zubak, our own Yang Chen, and Linda Kiriazi, all received recognition from the commission. And they had other events after the Walk to School Wednesday with Hawthorne and Horace Man. They also had some digital kindness events and had people posting their little heart thing. Is that right, Commissioner Kraushauer? Am I doing that right? Thank you. Cape. Yes, that's another language. Thank you so much. I also, I wanted to correct the record on a couple items. At the last meeting, there were some comments made during the construction program update, that the district wasn't going to finish Building C or any, or the athletic fields, and that the board didn't even talk about doing the upper fields. And I just wanted to direct people to the 2018 Master Facilities Plan, which had all of those items, including Building C, the upper athletic fields, and the lower athletic fields, and six new tennis courts. So I just wanted to put that on the record. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Wells?
I have nothing to report in terms of meetings from the last two weeks, but as well, I feel like we've all spoken about the issues of today. So thank you very much.
I wanted to share that on Thursday of last week, Dr. Breggy, myself, Mr. Seaman, and Mrs. Collins Williams attended the LAUSD data digs. And that's where LAUSD picks on an annual basis, 100 LAUSD schools, and really digs in with them on a quarterly basis as to a lot of things. Their academics, their problems that they're having, whether it's social, emotional, economic, and so on. I'm really grateful to the LAUSD folks for the way that they welcomed us. They were very warm and welcoming and gave us a front-row seat. And thank you to you guys for joining me. When we were there, it actually was very comforting, because it's clear that what we do is very similar to the data tracking and the analysis that they're conducting. So that was extremely comforting. There were a couple things that we learned about, and I'd love to have an opportunity to debrief about it, because there were a couple things that were like, oh, that's interesting, or we had one or two items that I think recently have come up for us. So it'd be nice to circle back and see how we want to recalibrate. Separately, one thing that we heard them talking about again and again is their homelessness. They have 10% homeless children. In some schools, up to 2%. Some of those principals are trying to find out how they can get Walmart to donate socks and shoes for their kids. And it was extremely humbling. So I look forward, Dr. Breggy, to working with you and the team on circling back and debriefing on that, please. And then also, of course, on Tuesday is voting day, and I hope that everybody will exercise, you know, their right to vote, which is a privilege in a lot of other places. And so we got to get the vote out. Everybody really needs to make their voice heard. I wish our colleague, Mrs. Wells, the best of luck.
Thank you.
And so I just hope that our community will really participate in the turnout.
I'm just going to add one thing before you go, because the comment that you made, Mr. Margot, about the construction plans from 2018, I think you're right. And when we went out for the bonds, there were a lot of things on that, on those plans that were intended to be done with the bond dollars. I think what the board member that referenced that at the last meeting was referencing was when TCDS had presented to us that, I think it was in October of 2022, if I remember correctly, that we did not have the funds to do Building C as well as finish the fields, and there was no plans to finish the fields on the budget for the upper fields. And those are the references, I think, that the board member was making at that time. And now we're able to finish all those things with the same, with the same bond dollars that we had, with their reworking the program and finding efficiencies and saving dollars. So I just want to clarify that. There were a lot of things that we planned to do when we went out for the bonds, but all those things started to go away as the expense and the time to complete the work that was being done was eaten up, to the point where we thought we wouldn't even be able to finish anything but B3 and B4.
Thank you for clarifying. I do see that Noah wanted to add on.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate this issue. Right now, it's board comments, but it's, I don't want to keep doing it. The specific comment that was made was regarding plans for the upper field. There were no plans for it. There were plans for the upper field.
Sorry. I thought you were talking about.
I was talking about budget. I was talking about budget.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay. Ms. Marcus?
My turn?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I attended the Health and Safety Commission meeting yesterday after the usual reports from the police and fire department, which they usually tell you about incidents and how they compare to last year and this year, and what the incidents are and so on. There was one particular thing that they talked about was that the fire chief, or the fire police officer that was reporting for the fire department, showed a picture of the recent explosion that occurred down in Wilmington, I believe it was. I'm not sure exactly of the location, but he mentioned what they learned from all of this, and the fact that there were two firemen that were severely injured, one is still in the hospital. But they talked about all the health gear that actually did save the firemen, and what, that they are lucky to be alive. And Beverly Hills feels that they were comparing how they'll be ready, and how their equipment and everything keeps them ready as much as they can, too. So this particular incident was a training session and a look to see what they are doing, to make sure they're doing the right thing, in case such anything like that would ever happen in Beverly Hills. They had a report from the emergency, the Office of Emergency Management. They work in coordination for the preparedness and subsequent recovery from major emergencies or disasters. And they gave a report on their work so far this year. Then there was a report from the Human Services Department detailing how they're dealing with the problem of homelessness and serving those in need. Information on the storage containers was also mentioned and talked about in the city, and of course, the use of the ambassadors and how they help with the homeless and other problems in the city. I also attended the CBOC meeting a week ago. They reviewed the audit that they got from our auditor. They were very pleased and that so many issues of previous audits have been addressed now, and they're anxious to do, see a tour of ER and B3 and B4 in the very near future. And so they're really very happy with what's going on. Tomorrow night, at the BVMS, is Mr. Pinto's drama classes are presenting a Midsummer's Night Dream, and it's only for one night. So if you want to see it, I suggest that you make sure that you go, because I'm sure it will be SRO. He has large classes. He makes sure that they all get a part and all the parents show up. So please, make an attempt to be there tomorrow night. And once again, as my colleague on my right said, don't forget to get out to vote next week. And I want to wish good luck to my colleague on the right.
Thank you so much.
And I will move on. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to add, as Mrs. Marcus was saying, when I meet with the commissions, the HRC Commission, and she does health and safety, and you guys do wrecking parks, I was wondering, because I only meet with them once a month, and I tell them the events that are going on. I kind of collect as many things. But things are continuous in our district, and things are always going on that relate to the commissions that we both, we all report on. And I don't know, I know that we do send information and blasts through the city hall, but I'm wondering if there's a way to somehow, when we're invited to like wellness events, that the Health and Safety Commission could be invited as well, things like that. I'm just trying to think of, as we're building a stronger relationship with the city, that events that really may pertain directly to those commissions, can they can, the commissioners can be invited directly. Okay.
One additional note to that, they make a frequent referral to our Bulldog Aid and Norman Aid Centers, and I'm going to be meeting with the president, the chair, in a couple weeks. So she wants to know how she can become, that they can become more involved. So that is something, so that, I agree with you, and it's nice to see that they are interested. In fact, she mentioned something that I did ask Dr. Breggy about, and that is a program that's at the Norman Aid Center called Mental, Men to Health. And I'm going to, I sent a note to Ally Norman to see what I could find out about that, because it sounded kind of interesting. I don't know, do you know anything about that, Ms. Lisa?
There is a Men hyphen Tell Mental Health Club at school run by students. I think that's what she might be referring. That's the only use of that sort of play on words I'm aware of at school. But yeah, that is, that is definitely a club.
I didn't know if it was part of Norman Aid.
It is not part of, it's a student-run organization, but.
Okay.
Mental health in that pool. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything further to add. So with that, I think we shall adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.